Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Father Tachoris is here from St. George Greek Orthodox Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Ryan if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
Almighty God, our help and refuge, the fountain of wisdom and tower of strength, we know that we can do nothing without your guidance and help. Assist us, we pray, and guide us to divine wisdom and power, that we may accomplish this task in whatever we undertake to do faithfully and diligently according to your will, so that it may be beneficial to us and to others and to the glory of your holy name. For yours is the kingdom and the power and the glory of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, now and ever and till ages of ages. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for As we call the meeting to order, we'll move to item three on the council agenda. It's a series of appointments. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item four, it's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 11th, and item 4B is to approve the Journal for March 4th. Comments or questions on the Journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just a couple this morning. On page nine, under item eight, B, 8B on page nine and Ward 8, PUD 1524, the applicant requests that this application be withdrawn. And then moving on to page 11, unsecured properties, item eight, G1, item A, 2809 South Central, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item F, 2828 Northwest 16th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item H, 1921 Northwest 30th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item K, 1236 Southwest 49th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? We'll assess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are four items.
Mayor, I just had a quick question on item A. And this is some electric relocation of electric facilities with OGNB, and it lists all of the issues, traffic control, signs, markings. But the last thing is U.S. Army Corps of Engineers 404 permit documentation. And I have never seen that before. I just didn't know what that meant.
Well, 404 document, that's runoff. That's changing a stormway or a creek. And I assume that the lines, I don't want to assume anything, Eric's here, but I assume we're having an effect on some type of creek or water crossing.
I'm sorry, I just didn't hear the question.
Look, I just didn't know what an Army Corps of Engineers 404 permit was.
It is. Anytime we have one of our roadway projects that crosses a major channel, the Army Corps of Engineers regulates certain channels in the state, ones that we call blue line. They're shown on a USGS map. So it's very, it's upfront. We know which ones are monitored. This is the permit to have them review and as a part of the project approve the work that's in the area.
Yeah.
All right, ready to vote the MFA? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are four items, and I think we're going to have a presentation on the Senior Health and Wellness Center.
We are, Mayor. This is the first of the senior wellness centers are coming through. It's on the PPA because it's a multi-year agreement, and the city can't do multi-year agreements, so it's a joint agreement with the city and the PPA. And the way we set this up is we have a memorandum of understanding that lines out the terms, and we're asking to be approved today, and then we'll fill that out with more details as it go forward. But this will kind of give us the up, this going on the project. This is similar to what we did on the Thunder Agreement. We came in, we kind of agreed to the business terms, and we did that in a, I don't know, five or six-page agreement, then we later filled out, you know, four major agreements to really memorialize that. And we'll be doing the same thing here today. David Todd, Wiley Williams, and Mike Myers are here today to talk about the processes we've been through.
Okay.
Jim, could I just, a general question about that, as we continue to negotiate, will those all come back to council?
No, it will culminate in a full agreement that will come back through the MAPS committee processes and to the City Council for final option.
Good morning. As you know, this has been a lengthy process with many people involved, and this includes the MAPS staff, ADG, Planning Department, Finance Department, Public Works Department, City Legal Staff, and GSB Consultant Lifespan Design Studio, and members of the Senior Wellness Subcommittee. It started with an RFP process and then another RFP process, and a council workshop. So ultimately, what we have today is a result of that workshop. And this agreement was negotiated by MAPS staff, ADG, and legal staff, and then approved by the Subcommittee and Advisory Board. So I'd like to invite Mike Myers up here to just give you a quick summary on the RFP that was sent out earlier in this process.
Thanks, David. Mayor, council members, manager, I'm gonna, I'll just be brief. You've heard most of this before, but I want to give you a brief run-through of how we got to where we are. You may remember that the first RFP that we sent out resulted in only two responses. Neither one of those was accepted. We decided we needed to go back and figure out why we had so few responses. We ended up talking, we, planning, MAPS staff, ADG, ended up talking to more than 20 agencies, both for-profit and not-for-profit, which provide senior services, to try and come up with a list of items that precluded people from responding the first time. A number of those changed, we made a number of changes the second time, to the second RFP. Those changes included the clarification of land use and ownership, which was a big problem for some people. We gave more latitude for partnerships and creative proposals. We tried to make it clear that we were going to be very flexible in terms of the organization and the type of organization that could be represented as an operating partner. Once we ironed out those different issues, we issued another RFP, received four responses. During the interview process, one of the four respondents was eliminated. We ended up with three respondents, which was the case when we had the City Council Workshop last November. At that City Council Workshop, we were directed, and staff was directed, to negotiate with those three entities. Subsequent to that, one of those entities has dropped out, and we're now in the process of negotiating with the remaining two. Any questions about the history? Thank you.
So after we got into the negotiations part of it, it became obvious that we couldn't develop a complete contract with these groups. So we chose to start with this binding term sheet that you've got before you today, with the intention to return to you at a later date with a full, long-term agreement. So I'd like to ask Wiley Williams to come up here and talk to you about the high points of the binding term sheet that you have today.
Yes, as David has said, we started off with the concept of trying to draft a major agreement, but as it played out, it was very difficult to do that without knowing what the facility was wanting to look like. Each of the partners we're trying to partner with, it just made it difficult. So we agreed to go with the binding term sheet concept. The highlights of the term sheet is it's an agreement between OC PPA, so we can enter into a long-term agreement, the city and the operator, which in this case is Healthy Living and Fitness Inc. It is for a term of five years with three five-year renewals, so an option for 20 years. And each way, at each mark, five-year mark, there's an opportunity to look at the contract and see if we need to make changes or tweaks and those kind of things. And the initial term was proposed by the operator, so we're all in agreement with that. There will also be a purchase of the property, which will be by a separate agreement that we'll bring back to you, and it'll be based on an appraisal and a fair market value, taking into account the type of contract that might be part of the consideration for the value of the property. But it will be based on an appraisal and hopefully a fair market value purchase of the property. That property will then be leased to the OC PPA on a long-term basis, and then subleased to the operator. During the planning and construction phase, the contract requires the operator to provide a person with binding authority to attend meetings with staff, city council, the subcommittees, to talk about the design process, so that they have input along the way, is what they want that facility to look like, to maximize what they, how they want to operate it. And they'll also are obligated to secure and contract with all of their subcontractors that are necessary for them to operate the facility, and they're to hire and train all the employees and their volunteers, so that on the day the occupancy permit is issued or close to that, they're ready to go. And then they are also during this time to discuss programs and services, as well as a fee structure with the other operators that are selected by the city. So that, we're not expecting a uniform system, but something that's pretty comparable, because they each have different ways of making money, and we want them to succeed since we don't want to subsidize them. The days and hours of operations, there are a minimum of 65 hours per week, and four of those hours have to be on one of the weekend days. That's the minimum. They can operate more than that, but that's what we've put in there that they have to On programs and services, they're set out in Exhibit A to the term sheet you see there. We've left blanks for the amount of hours. That's to be negotiated through the long-term contract, but it gives you an idea of the different kinds of types of services they're going to offer. We didn't want to get down to the fine print at this time, but it's a concept. The fees, as I've talked about that, they will be, they have to be based on income level, at least a minimum one, and they will be reviewed and required approval by the city manager or his designee. Maintenance and repairs, the operator will be responsible for general maintenance and repair costs, which is defined in the agreement as amounts of $7,500 or less. The trust, the OC PPA, will be responsible for replacing any capital items. And those terms may be kind of tweaked through the negotiating process for the major agreement. The city will retain all the naming rights to the facility itself, but the operator can have what we call sponsorship agreements with others. If they want a particular room or something like that, they want to, that they could secure a revenue stream from, they can do that. But the actual facility itself, the naming rights will be retained by the city. The rental of the facility, the operator can rent the facility, but we've put some limitations on that rental activity, so that there is some control. It has to be on a first-come, first-served basis. You can only make reservations for a year in advance, and if you lease it more than two times in any 30-day period, you can only have up to 80% of the facility, leaving 20% of it available to others to use. So we put some restrictions on that. There will be contract oversight. The policies of the operator have to be submitted to the city manager for approval. The operator has to provide periodic reports to the trust and city council, and the city and OC PPA have the right to audit their programs and services and financial records related to the operation. And then we've also put in provisions for protection of rights, trying to strike a balance between the very complicated First Amendment rights and the Establishment Clause that was discussed pretty thoroughly at the council workshop. And so there's protections both ways there. And that's in a nutshell the highlights of the agreement.
Just a couple of questions. Wiley, has this term sheet been distributed to all the people we're negotiating?
I'm sorry?
Has a term sheet, this binding term sheet or bidding term sheet, that we didn't get a copy of, because I didn't get a copy of it? Has that been distributed to all the people we're dealing with?
Yes, it has been. It should be in your packet for approval today.
But we didn't get it. I didn't get a copy. Anyway, have we had negative comments from the people that we're dealing with in terms of the?
It was presented to the Subcommittee and the MAPS 3 Oversight Committee. They both approved it and are in agreement with it, so.
But as far as the people we are negotiating with?
Oh, yes, it's been signed by them.
Yeah, Councilman, it was a negotiation process. We didn't just come up with it and ask them to sign it. It was, because we want each of the wellness centers to work with the proposer and work with the neighborhood that it's going to be located, so it was a dialogue that developed this binding term sheet. So the one you see for North Care that will probably come in about 30 days will be similar, but there will be some differences in it.
The other question I have is on the land transfer, is the city going to purchase that land from the church or from the subsidiary of the church established on this facility?
It'll be purchased from whoever owns it.
I understand that, but who will own it at the time, the actual?
It will be Healthy Living Incorporated that will?
They will take title to it from the church.
Yes, sir.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Is there any concern, David, about the minimum of four hours collectively over the weekend? I mean, was that discussed in detail?
It was discussed, and I'm drawing a blank on exactly what we determined.
Yeah, the Healthy Living, Inc., of course, they want to use it on the Sunday, so we wanted to make sure that they at least opened it on Saturday for a minimum number of hours. We expected, hopefully it'll be more hours than that, but, and they may open it on Sunday too, but we didn't want to obligate, they didn't want to obligate themselves to that either, so.
That's right. I guess, long-term, I would hope that it would be open both Saturday and Sunday, and there may be some hours on Sunday that it could be open. And it's, you know, reasonable to expect that if seniors are using it during the week, might be more convenient than weekends, but I think we need to have as much flexibility in terms of when it is available to the public as we possibly can.
Councilwoman, some of the research that we did shows that they are used more often during the week than on the weekend. We wanted to set some minimum amount of time, we all hope, and both of the people we're negotiating with have expressed an interest in trying to have it open more on weekends. But other, similar kinds of facilities have experienced heavier use during the week than on the weekends.
Okay. Any other questions from council? All right, Wiley, thanks. And I know the operator is Hill Bill. We appreciate your patience through this process, and appreciate your commitment to the MAPS 3 agenda. Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
All right, cast your votes on the PPA. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, just the claims and payroll today.
Yeah.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, any individual considerations on the consent docket?
I have a minor question. I need to be educated on what we're doing in this particular item number 4D, or 6D, pardon me.
D as in dog?
D as in dog, yes.
Okay. Is that your only one, Pat?
Yes, sir.
All right, Meg?
Yeah, Mayor, I just had a quick question about 6A1.
A1, all right. All right, Pat, you want to go ahead and get started with item D?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a pricing agreement for renewal, and one of the vendors submitted a revised price sheet that provided for a slight increase rate. And I think that's fine.
Can you start that again? Amy just entered the chambers.
It may not be the same, but I'll try.
Okay.
I have a concern, not a concern really, it's more an educational thing. On item 6D, it was renewed of a pricing agreement, and the staff has notified the vendors that the city wishes to renew the pricing agreements under the same terms and conditions, including price as previously ordered. And one of the vendors submitted a revised price sheet that had a small increase amount of money they were going to ask for. How does that impact the other vendors? Are they going to get less money than the first?
No, normally these are going to be specialized items, so if we were to go back out for bid, probably there's certain items that we need to purchase from that vendor, but it's really not going to impact because they're bidding different price sheets. So depending on the commodity, if we thought someone was raising their price above one of their competitors, we probably would not renew with them, or we would rebid.
The fact that they're increasing their price sheet, that has no impact then on the other vendors?
Correct. We allow for that in our specifications, so.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, Meg, item A1.
Yeah, and again, this really was just to clarify, it's sort of an educational thing as well, but this is a contract award for the treatment filters for the Whitewater facility.
There was a large lead time on those, so we thought we'd order those early to make sure they were available for the contractor when the bids were?
And Jim, my only question was that when the bidder came forward, I guess, their agreement had some things that were in conflict with our original request. And the note says that the bidder has acknowledged that their terms didn't meet the city's requirements and that they have agreed to follow our terms and requirements, and that SO, S2O Design had confirmed with them that that was correct. And I just want to, so to some extent, were relying on S2O, who's the primary contractor on this project?
They're not the contractor, they're the designer.
The designer, okay.
The contractor, the contract for construction has not been let at this point in time. This is an early procurement item to make sure that the filters were available for the contractors who go forward. We don't normally do this.
Right.
And his dates didn't drive with our dates, but his letter came back and told us that the dates are fine.
And I also received documentation from the bidder that they do agree to our terms and conditions.
Okay, which included the free shipping, which is probably a significant cost. All right, thank you.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket? I cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket. Well, there's nothing on the concurrence docket today. On item eight, these are items that require a separate vote. The first is a zoning case in Ward 5. The address is 13601 South Western Avenue. It's currently a double-A agricultural district, and it would become a new planned unit development. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Francis, is there anyone signed up? Okay, I move for approval.
Thank you.
All right, comments or questions in on item 8A1? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is, has been continued. No, we're going to hear that one, right?
That's correct.
That's right. It's 8B that we've withdrawn, okay. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 4025 North May Avenue. Is anyone here representing the developer? Yeah, would you step forward and tell us what you have planned here?
A whole lotta fever for the developer. This is a 2.4-acre spud that is associated with a larger surrounding property development of a Sam's Club at this old automotive location. And this was a cleaning up of an old spud that only allowed parking, but not some of the building footprint existing on it. So it's a process, the whole, the rest of the site is zoned properly, except for this 2.4 acres.
All right, any comments or questions?
Did we have anybody sign up on this?
No one has signed up.
Then I wouldn't move approval.
All right, okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8B has been withdrawn. We'll move on to item 8C, and this is our award of the bonds. I am assuming it's too early for us to do that. Won't we move on? Jim's checking now.
I was just checking the time. We anticipate that'll probably be about 9:30.
9:30, okay. So we'll come back to item 8C. And item 8D is the same thing?
Yes, sir.
Selling the gold bonds. All right. Item 8E is an ordinance going to be introduced today. Is Eric going to be making a presentation to council?
Yes.
Yes.
And there he is. Eric, we're on item 8E.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we have today is a revision to ordinance. It's actually Chapter 32, which pertains to traffic items. We've recently received a request from Western Heights Public Schools. As most of you are aware, the old Bridgestone Tire Plant was converted into an elementary school on South Council Road. That site has a fence that protects that site, and it was built as a part of that plant, but now that it's a school, they requested a school zone. Unfortunately, Chapter 32 doesn't provide that we can provide that. If you look at it in the wording, protected school sites are not eligible for school zones. So we're not really sure how the language was written and why it was proposed that way, but what we're asking for your consideration today is to remove protected school sites as one of the defined terms for school zones that will allow the traffic commission to hear the case and consider the school zone requested by Western Heights. So it's really that simple. It's just a definition. It's just amending some simple language to allow this to move forward.
Does the current ordinance define what a protected school zone is?
It talks... It's a protected school site. So it says, the last sentence in Section 32170 states that protected school sites, colleges, VOTECs, and some others, basically not be signed. And again, I think just through the current wording, it's been implied that that includes the fencing as a restriction. So this would just simply be able to remove that.
Okay, so nowhere in the existing ordinance clearly define what protected school site is?
I believe that it is. I don't have that specific sentence in there, but that's how it's being interpreted.
Eric, on the... Pat, on the front side of the memo, it does say that Part A of 3272 defines a protected school site in the following manner. A protected school site shall mean a school site where a fence, barrier, or unused property exists between the school site and the street or highway, which restricts pedestrian access.
Will that be fricking...
We're actually just going to remove the complete terminology, protected school site, so it just doesn't apply at all. But thank you.
Mm-hmm. This item being introduced today. Any other comments or questions from council? All right. How about a motion then to move it forward?
Move the item in a second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And I'll note this item will be back for a public hearing on March 25th. Item 8F is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Has anyone signed up to speak? Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8F?
Yes.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8G? All right. How about a motion?
Move the item in a second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8H is a series of revocable right-of-way permit requests, and we have representatives from at least a couple of these. Dick Ballencipher from Putnam City Schools is here. Well, that's item 2. Hold on, Dick, just a second. Is there anyone here from the MDA on the MDA Hero Run? Yes, come forward, please. This is an event called the MDA Hero Run 5K, and it would run in Ward 6 and 7 along Broadway on March 29th. Good morning. We will need your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Moira McCarthy. M-O-I-R-A. M-C-C-A-R-T-H-Y. And my office address... Does that work, or do you want my home address?
Either one.
My office is at 5601 Northwest 72nd Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma.
Okay. And tell us about the MDA Hero Run 5K.
It is a run to benefit Oklahomans suffering with neuromuscular disease, ALS, which is more commonly known as Lou Gehrig's disease, and other neuromuscular diseases. So the race is going to be on March 29th at 8:00 a.m. at the Cox Convention Center. It'll be timed by DG Productions, and they run a really tight ship, so we plan to get everyone off the street, hopefully by about, like, noon. I applied for 2:00 o'clock just to be safe. I don't want to cause a lot of trouble for any businesses around the area, and actually I've talked to several about maybe maximizing profits that day via the additional foot traffic. So I think it'll be a good deal for everyone involved, and we'll have a beer tent, but I've applied for my low-point beer sales permit, and everything looks good according to Lieutenant Kimberlin, and I believe that, you know, with your permission, it'll be a great race, and it'll be fun and a great event for the city.
Okay. And this is a Saturday, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments or questions from council?
Yeah, Pat, how much money do you expect to raise?
This is a first-year event, so it's difficult to say, but I'm hoping for, in, like, the area of about $20,000.
Good luck.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate it.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
On item 8H2, this is the Putnam City School District's going to be holding the Spring Fall Run. And as I mentioned earlier, Dick Ballencipher is here. Dick?
Thank you. This March 29th, Putnam City School District Athletic Department, we are proposing to get a revocable permit to host our annual Spring Fall Run. This will be the third year of the run. We actually only closed down, I believe, Northwest 117th Street, which is on the south side of Putnam City North High School. We closed that road down for approximately 45 minutes to an hour. The money benefits that we raise, which we... Traditionally, we raise about $5,000. It benefits our entire district athletic department. We have about 400 to 500 participants, and then after the event is finished, we go inside of the Putnam City North cafeteria, where we have a big pancake breakfast and award ceremony. It's just a pretty fun thing, and so that's really about it. I'd be glad to answer questions. This is our third year to host the run, and the process has been different. This is the first time that we have had to appear before the city council to request a permit, but that's good. I enjoy being here.
Can you guarantee that this will cause a spring fall?
What'd you say?
Guarantee this spring fall, Harvey?
Pat, I'd love to guarantee that, but I've lived in Oklahoma a long time, and I just hope so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks. Good luck.
Will Mr. Ryan get us our permit?
He'll be running. He'll be the first player in the...
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Item 8H3 is an event to be held in Ward 7, also on March 29th, and Ronnie Ferris is here. Good morning.
Good morning. I represent a group of medical students on the Health Sciences Center campus that we put on this annual event. We are the Community Health Alliance. Our goal is to empower and educate the community regarding the health care of Oklahoma City. This event is a philanthropic event. We... Each year, we raise money for the free clinics here in Oklahoma City that we work in. This year, our proceeds will go to the Middel Variety Clinic over in Midwest City. Our event is completely contained within the Health Sciences Center campus. It's completely within the Health Sciences Center police jurisdiction. We're working closely with them to ensure that we're not on any major streets or blocking any hospital routes or anything of that nature. That's pretty much it. It starts at 9:00 a.m. that Saturday, March 29th. We're doing both a 5K and a 10K, and we will have police involvement and volunteers and all sorts of things to ensure the safety of our participants.
Excellent. I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thanks.
Thanks, and good luck. We're on to item 8I, and this is a resolution that would have some policy amendments to our housing programs. Aubrey Hemontree is here. Aubrey, you gonna have a presentation for us?
No. Bob Daly with the City Housing Rehab Program. As our program continues to evolve in the rehab, we incorporate many things. We had to incorporate lead-based paint and minimum property standards inspections. As part of this, now we're incorporating the Green Initiative rebuilding, and it has generated an increased cost by doing so. We're adding thermal paint replacement windows, radiant barrier decking, energy-efficient energy-starved appliances and water heaters to our rehab program, which has increased our costs by about 25%. So we're requesting to raise our limits for our rehab program from $33,500 for rehab up to $42,500 to incorporate, to cover the additional cost for that in our home exterior maintenance program, raising it from $14,000 to $18,000, if you'd approve this policy change.
Is this policy in line with what other cities are doing?
Yes, and, you know, the HUD just recently came out with a HUD Green Initiative retrofit for rehab, and we're really trying to reduce the cost and the burden for homeowners and our senior citizens that are low-income, reducing their utility costs, the radiant barrier decking, the insulation. All these things will make a difference for the cost for their utilities.
All right.
And really improve our program.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Bob, thanks. Item 8J. We need executive session on this item?
We do.
Okay. So how about a motion to move item 8J into executive session? Cast your votes. That item moves to executive session. Item 8K, understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Motion to strike. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9 is items from council. Pat, do you have anything for us today? John? Meg? All right. David? All right. City manager reports?
Mr. Manager... Or, Mr. Mayor, we are coming up on the 125th birthday of the City of Oklahoma City. Kristi Jaeger is here this morning to highlight some of the activities.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I am so excited to be a part of the Birthday Committee for our 125th birthday. We've got probably a dozen city employees that are working on the committee and other people from the community that are helping us to celebrate this day. It'll be April 22nd, which happens to be the opening day for the Festival of the Arts, so they're going to help kick off our party. Perfect timing. So what we've got planned right now is the party will start at 8:30. We're going to serve cake from the third-floor conference room, the City Clerk's Conference Room. We're going to have a giant birthday card for people to sign. We're going to have free tours that will start from the second floor, and they'll go throughout City Hall for people interested in taking that. The police chief has offered to bring his 1910 fire rig and park it on the plaza here on the east side of City Hall for people to check out.
Fire chief.
Oh, fire chief. And we're also going to have an exhibit down on the second floor that will be our sooner or later exhibit, and you've started seeing that going up right now, and it'll highlight our history starting in April 22nd. So a lot of things happening in City Hall. That is the city council day, so we'll have a resolution on the agenda that day. And we're also going to have a historical presentation and illustration here in the chamber at 2:00, and this is Dr. Bob Blackburn's presentation that he gives with Jim Loftus. I don't know if you've seen it, but it's supposed to be spectacular. So we'll invite the public into this building. We'll film it, so people can watch it on Channel 20, and we'll re... We'll show that later on throughout the week or the month, and we're hoping a lot of people come out to see that. The Festival of the Arts kicks off at noon that day with the mayor and the governor, I think, taking the stage, and they're going to be doing face painting all week on kids' faces that say, "I love OKC." They'll also be doing some activities with children that would include children writing their birthday wishes for Oklahoma City, and then they'll be able to place that on something. I don't... We don't have that completely firmed up, but there'll be some interactive activities for children to show their pride in Oklahoma City. We also have that evening a Spokys history tour. So the Spokys Bike will start... Tour will start at the library, and they'll stop throughout downtown Oklahoma City at some historical sites, and we'll have a specialist for that area talk about what happened in that area throughout history. So we'll be able to talk about Deep Deuce. We'll talk about the area around the library. We'll talk about St. Anthony, a little bit of everything. So that should be a really informative Spokys tour. We also have created 125 facts about Oklahoma City, one fact for every year, and we'll be giving that out to schoolchildren. We'll be tweeting it throughout the month, the next 125 days. We have... Are working... Debbie Martin is working with Oklahoma City Public Schools to have a contest for elementary schoolchildren of who can make the best birthday card for Oklahoma City, and the school will be reviewing those, and then an essay contest for junior high students, for middle school students, about Oklahoma City's history. So I just feel like we've got a nice, well-rounded group of activities, and they're all very low-cost for us to produce, and we're just so proud to be a part of this activity. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Kristi? All right. We're excited about it. So it's obviously it's April 22nd?
April 22nd, yep.
And the 125th anniversary of the Land Run and the beginning of Oklahoma City. Kristi, thank you.
Kristi, don't forget to mention the free Metro Transit bus rides on that day.
You're right. You're right. It's also Earth Day that day, so we've had a lot of things happening that day, and so they'll be offering Earth Day and birthday rides that day.
Earth Day and birthday. Just when you thought no word rhymed with Earth Day comes up birthday. All right. Thanks, Kristi. Claims and payrolls, are any other items? City manager reports? Anything else, Jim?
Sorry, the bids are in. They're just doing the final tabulations, and so I think if we go to executive session, we'll be able to get back.
Citizens to be heard. I'll ask them to keep their comments to three minutes or less, and just... We just have one signed up? All right. Joe Sars Nelson.
I am Joe Sars Nelson. Most of y'all already know me. And congratulations on your win, Mr. Mayor. Now, the dust has kind of settled. I'm going to read this. Strange places where I've been having to look. And, of course, naturally, with all the hustle and stuff like has been going on, trips and out of town, and local educations and so forth, and if you keep up with the Daily Oklahoman, my esteemed cousin, somewhere down the line, Ron Norick, got himself proclaimed by the OSSAA College. He's, in fact, a professional athlete, and as such, became eligible for high school and college games, and, of course, there's more to that story. Now, this same college is known for handing out free passes to games that encounter to government officials, of course, that are limited to two per... You'll have to excuse me. I'm on medication right now. Two per persons. I believe you brought this up here a while back, and there was kind of a big conflict about everybody getting free passes, the Thunder Games, and odds and ends. I'm just going to eliminate a lot of this stuff here. My big reasons is, I wrote a letter, and you all got a copy of it, and then I wrote one to you three up there. You can disregard the letter. I'm not interested in the meeting anymore. But I am interested in the other things. I do have a website. It's going to be available starting November, November, in 10 days. It's going to be the Nelson Report. A lot of people thought it didn't exist. It does, and it's going to be thenelsonreport.net. It is not on FlashBook, and it's going to divulge everything my four-year investigation has brought to light. And one other question I would like to ask, I did have a conversation some while back with our city manager in reference to 420 West Main, and so people know that I'm not the foolish little contractor people think I am. He knows that I knew what I was talking about. Would you consider myself an adjuster and a state inspector, preferably federally licensed, to look over 420 West Main since it's back in operation?
So you're able to comment to council?
Mr. Meg, there's people's lives at stake. I am really tired of being sidestepped. I've talked to the Federals about this. I even spoke to him about it. He gave me his word on the phone that things were steps to be taken. I know what's been replaced and what hadn't. People in that building's been calling me on a regular basis. I know about the breakers. I know about the little fuses, but nothing else has been touched. The switch gears, transformers, all that have not been replaced. Now, people's lives are at stake here, Mr. Mayor, in a building. If something goes wrong later on in fusion because of static electricity, there's going to be an explosion in that building. And it's not funny. It's not funny, it's not even hilarious. Now, they had toxic gas in there once before. Now, they've got that correct, but they haven't corrected the problem. Anytime electrical equipment of that nature is ever tampered with by moisture, it becomes a danger sooner or later. People can get killed over that. It don't often happen, but they can in that particular building.
Joe, thanks for coming down.
Thank you very much.
We have executive session. We'll be back.
The executive session has ended. We're in a 10-minute recess. We'll be back.
Not quite as good as my recollections, but it's the last time we sold the GOs. The GOs are about 100 basis points better than the last time we sold those, less than 4 percent taxable.
Bring the meeting back in session and we, in executive session, we discussed item 8J. We need a motion to move forward on that. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And earlier, we went past a couple of items, 8C and 8D, awaiting the results of the financial markets, and apparently those results are now in.
Craig or Dennis?
We'll pass these items out to you. We did get very good bids. The, so we'll have the two different, well, there's four items actually, the award of sale and the ordinance, both on a taxable sale, the $92,185,000 GO sale. The winning bidder on that, on that sale was Bank of America Merrill Lynch with a true interest cost of $2.962067. And, you know, the strong bids on those are a reflection of the AAA rating and the leadership of the council and for the city with strong financial management. And so these are very good bids. We're very pleased with this. And so there'll be the award of the sale and the approval of the ordinance.
Since this is my always favorite thing to do when they come hot off the press, make a motion if we approve and award the purchase.
All right. Motion and a second is on item 8C1. This is the award of purchase. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. I'll need a motion on item 8C2. Passed unanimously and those bonds can now be issued. And then item 8D is the gold bonds. And the gold bonds, these are taxable bonds, so the rates are a little bit different on this. The winning bidder on this one is Fifth Third Bank out of Cincinnati, Ohio. And their bid is $3.838902. And so there'd be the award of the sale and the ordinance for the, for the gold bonds. And these are the gold bonds, those taxable bonds for the economic development projects.
Move the items.
All right. Cast your votes on item 8D1. It passed unanimously. And then item 8D2. Cast your vote and it passed unanimously too. I would like to, like to recognize too our bond team, Kenny Sudel and Joanna McSpadden from the Finance Department. Kenny's our debt manager, manages our debt program. With John Williams, Bond Counsel, and then Gary Bush is also here. Gary Bush isn't with us right now. He went on to another meeting. But with Public Finance Law Group and John is with William Box Foshee. And so we appreciate their effort. And then Wyatt Williams with Municipal Counselors Office. And then Dennis Whaley and Colby Euchols with Public Financial Management, our financial advisors. Appreciate all their hard work on getting this done and the leadership of the council and putting us in a strong position. All right. Thank you all very much. Are we ready to adjourn? All right. We're adjourned.